So I'll move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll move on to item two on our routine business. We need board action to appoint a chair and vice chair for 2022.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner?
I realize that our customary process has always been that we automatically move the commissioners through. But I've done some research, and this is not meant to affront anybody or speak negative of anybody about the whole thing. But I'm checking, and I found that of our southeast district, the other five counties all elect their person at large. I mean, they just have a nomination and they vote on it, much like it isn't a process. So I thought, okay, is that something that we ever want to look at or try? I also checked with the National Association of Counties and found out how many counties do that, this same process that we have used for years, and not very many. Everybody has had a process in which one person is looked at as a chair, and they can be voted in, voted out, whatever. So I'm offering this morning to our commissioners, I'll have a few other changes I'd like to make in our process, about trying to do that. And I looked over this past year, and having run a nonprofit board for about 25 years, when you get a person who does a good job as a chair, you usually give them another opportunity to perform for another year. We made that mandatory, that they had a two-year term. So having said that, I'm offering this idea, and you can throw it out. This is not meant to affront any commissioners. Please understand that. I'm just looking at the process that we use, and I think our past chair has done a very good job in some very difficult periods of time. And as we're moving into this new, we're looking at some major projects for our county. So therefore, commissioners, I would offer that I would motion that we would keep our current chair, at least for one more year, to get us through this entire process as we're working through. So that would be my motion to give Commissioner Landine one more year as chair. And you can say, you don't like it, what's wrong with what we have, you can do anything. I don't take affront, but I'm just offering that for my motion this morning.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
I guess I'd like to add.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, it seems to me that what you've done in the past has been very successful, and I think having someone be an assistant and then moved up the following year is, I think, advantageous. I hate to see us change something that has been successful in the past.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries? We'll move on to our consent agenda.
Do we have a vice chair nomination?
Oh, I'm sorry, skipped over. Yeah, let's entertain motions for vice chair.
I would motion for Commissioner Aaron's to be vice chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries? Now we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had a question about the...
Madam Chair, I'll second so we can discuss.
Okay, thanks for that.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
I had a question about the primo feedlot.
What item we got here?
That is under reports, correct?
Oh, that's prior to the consent agenda, but what's your question, Commissioner?
Well, I just wanted some clarification there, if it met county standards or state standards, or both, or neither, or why we were getting this now.
It's procedural. They're required to give us notices. It doesn't require us to act on anything. It's just they're required to notify us of their programs or their operations, so.
Yeah, the notice is from the state.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries? Move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to come up and address the board, you'll be limited to five minutes of time. Come on up. Just first state your name and address.
David Tuntland, 28947, 474th Avenue, Beershire, South Dakota. I'd like everybody to take note, to look at Helen Nelson's plaque and picture on the wall. She was a great auditor, building up her reserves, which the county has wasted in possibly the last 15 years. She had Paul LaFike as a deputy auditor, who was very good, too, who had followed Helen's way. The courthouse edition we stand in right now is greatly appreciated and was needed. On February 18th, 2020, Lincoln County Commission voted three to two for up to $50 million, 240-bed jail. I couldn't sleep at night because of it. Lincoln County Commission had just built an $8 million highway shop when Union County got by with $804,000. People from other counties and states were every wondering what such a monstrosity of a building West of Canton was built for. Pennington County, well over $100 million budget, has an $8 million highway shop, and quite a few more miles they have to maintain compared to Lincoln County's budget of whatever it was, right around 20. Fewer miles of road, but it was excessive spending. It's going to break us again. Lincoln County taxpayers really have to... We're complaining greatly about this highway shop, and then you were going to face us with a 240-bed jail up to $50 million. Back to this $50 million, 240-bed jail, excessive spending again. I had attorney Vince Falander of Minneapolis write the commission a letter telling them they needed over 60% vote to burden the taxpayer with this jail. Excuse me, I got a packet. Vince wrote the first letter to the county, and a week later, the second letter went out to the county commission from Vince's office. About a week went by, right close to Easter. Lincoln County Commission served me the summons to appear in court, inch and three eighths thick. Waste of paper. Anyway, word got out that I, David Tuntland, was hunted down like a dog to be served with these paper packets. "Served like a dog," the commissioner said. The first letter cost me $5,000 to Vince to print to the county. $40,000 war chest to protect myself and the taxpayers against a $50 million, 240-bed jail, which was going to be pushed upon us. June 24th, court day, at Lincoln County. Two Lincoln County Commissioners who pushed so hard for a $50 million jail and a 240-bed structure were nowhere to be seen or found in the courthouse. Probably not in the county either. People from Line, Sioux, Plymouth, Osceola, Yankton County showed up to watch. They were going to see what was going to happen. Judge John Pecus, who is a ruling judge, agreed 100% with what Vince Falander had presented, and attorney Mike Schaefer from Sioux Falls. Mike had a brilliant, brightly entertaining, convincing closure. Judge Pecus ruled in my favor. My winning group walked out the front door of the courthouse. The opposition group, who wanted $50 million jail, silently disappeared outside the courtroom. At this time, due to COVID, we had maybe around 43 people incarcerated. So what do we need a 240-bed jail for? And they were incarcerated in Sioux Falls. Lincoln County Commission withdrew the motion of $50 million, 240-bed jail in September of 2020. No mention of defeat in court. They don't want to admit to defeat. September 22nd, the idea popped up. They wanted to purchase 154 acres at T to build a jail and possibly a courthouse somewhat structured in that area. 1.4 million for 154 acres was agreed to be paid by September 30th. This isn't in our budget. Also with that corridor land that they were supposed to buy, 154 acres, the seller got to keep 75,000 cubic yards of dirt. Lincoln County Commissioners also had to pay $37,000 for the architecture fees for a 240-bed jail, but it was defeated in court. Lincoln County Commission, a Lincoln County Commissioner and Calo Terry Groton, got entered Lincoln County courthouse structure, and they said they kind of condemned it on the TV, which wasn't true. In November, it went to a vote of the public, jail and courtroom facility at T. The voters defeated it two to one. Well, Lincoln County wasted 1.4 million on 154 acres of ground, 37 for architecture fees. Can they recoup any of this money? Will anybody give 1.4 million for a slew to get the money back in our coffers? $70,000 is my bill with Vince Falander, Moran, Cartel, and Erickson in Minneapolis. Every tax that you commissioners impose on the people diminishes their freedom, takes away from their livelihood because they're burdened with a tax to whatever you commissioners put on them with your building projects. There's something about commissioners wanting to be prestigious, progressive.
Mr. Tuntland, your time is up. Thank you.
Image and greed.
Mr. Tuntland, your time is up. Please sit down.
I'll be back. Thank you.
Mr. Tuntland, I would encourage you to talk to legal counsel about the pendency of your case. All right, we'll move on to any further action or discussion on public comment? All right, any commissioner reports?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Last week, I know on December 30th, I met with Jesse Foncourt, who is the head of the CEO and president of the Sioux Falls Growth Alliance, along with representatives of the city of Canton, Worthing, myself, and South Lincoln Water Representatives in regard to water reclamation, regionalization. And specifically, we're talking along possibly the Highway 18 corridor. I was invited to the meeting. This was just an initial meeting to see what kind of support there was for any possible kind of project like this. Again, this was being looked at in regard to the possible construction project along Highway 18, of course, in 2023, and is there a possibility that we should be doing something and looking at water reclamation as a result of that? Again, although the consensus of those in attendance was to look into the concept because the state of South Dakota, and again, the federal government, have and are working on monies that are available to be dedicated towards such water reclamation infrastructure. Again, those communities, along with, I know the city of Lenox was also asked to attend, but they weren't in attendance, but again, could be a player in the project. And again, this is just for information. Jesse will look into the matter as far as more of the money that might be available, or if this is even possible. So I guess the ball is kind of in his court, and he'll be informing us later. His main concern is that he wanted us to come back to our boards and kind of let them know that this was just an initial project and that something may come out of this. That might be very positive, but time will tell.
Thank you for that report. Any other commissioners have a report they'd like to make today? If not, we will go ahead and move on to our annual board appointments. Or excuse me, we're going to move to our work session and discussion under regular business, since I see everybody's here that wanted to be a part of that this morning. I'm going to call and ask Mr. Grimmon to come up, and Mr. Golden, do you want to maybe join him? Or is he taking the lead on this? Okay. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm Tom Grimmon from Collier Securities, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I came here to, I guess, answer any questions you have, really. I did bring a couple graphs, I guess, I'd like to show. You guys have a display somewhere, right?
And Sherry, do we have a mic that can get passed around for people that are in the audience that might want to ask questions?
So I've been down here a couple times, and I usually bring the graph down to show where interest rates are at. And with the talk of the Fed, you know, taking action, six months ago, the Fed wasn't going to act until 2023 at the earliest. And then sometime in August, they upped that to one action in 2022. And then by the end of the year, now they're talking three actions in 2022. So that's changed dramatically, and of course, a lot of us have felt inflation. So that's going on, and one of the reasons why they've probably changed their decision to act in 2022. So anyways, to get to the graph, normally I come in with just the, what would be the green line, what they call the bond buyer weekly GO index, the 20-bond. And then I also layered in what the 10-year treasury is, and they kind of mirror each other there, especially for the last 10, 12 years. But I also put in, I layered in the Fed funds rate, and that's kind of the reddish graph. And as you can see, basically, I mean, it doesn't hold perfect, but as the Fed starts to increase interest rates, interest rates, you know, tend to follow along, the 10-year treasury does.
Can you explain that a little more detail? I mean, I'm not making any sense out of this. What is red? What is blue? What is green?
Well, there's a legend at the top, but the red is the Fed funds rate. Again, it's just for information that as the Fed starts to move, interest rates start to move.
So tell me, what does this mean?
So the Fed is going to act three times?
Explain this graph to me. What is it?
I think I just did.
Well, I didn't understand it. I don't think people in this room understood it. So explain it to me. It looks like somebody with a crayon went up and down here. So explain it.
Well, it's a graph of the 10-year treasury, okay? It's a graph of the Fed funds rate, and it's a graph of the bond buyer weekly, which is a municipal yield curve, all right, for the last, back to 1993. Does that make sense? Both of them layered on top of each other. The intent of the graph, the overview, is to see how the red line, which is the Fed funds rate, moves as that line moves with Fed action. And you can see how the 10-year treasury and the municipal bonds move along with the treasury rate. Again, I just brought this for informational purposes, that if the Fed is going to act, you're going to tend to see interest rates go up. It's just that, that's the intent of the graph. Right now, we're at very good interest rates, as you can see from the green line. Let me scoot this over a little bit. We're at around the 2% on a 20-year GO issue. So interest rates are very good right now. They're still very good. Where are they going? Well, if the Fed acts historically, according to this graph I'm trying to display, is that interest rates will tend to move higher. That's all it is. I'm just trying to give you a snapshot of where interest rates are at today and where they're possibly going, at least in the next year. If the Fed acts the way they say they're going to act with three interest rate increases. I don't know if they're going to be a quarter point. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't, maybe half-point increases, you know, maybe it all turned around and they'll stop acting. You know, maybe the economy will go into recession, and they won't act at all. But right now, that's what they're predicting. I don't have a crystal ball.
So right now, Tom, according to this chart, if we're paying attention to the red line, which is the Fed funds rate, which basically is the interest rate, which dictates how much money costs when you want to borrow it, at least for the last year, it's been about as low as it can go.
Right, right. And as you can see through the major, what they call the Great Recession, it was around what they called essentially zero, is 0.25%. You can see they had it way down there. That's where it's at now, too. They brought it way down to 0.25% again because of COVID.
So if we, on the courthouse, if we were to consider bonding for it, do you think we'd be around that 2% interest rate?
Well, right now. And again, I'm not here to drive the way, as I would call the dogs, the tail shouldn't wag the dog. The project, whenever you're talking project, the project should take priority. But there's always questions about, well, it's a good time to be in the market, though, isn't it? And of course, this shows that it is a good time to be in the market historically. So it's, you know, just brought it for informational purposes, so you kind of see where interest rates are at. Everybody always seems to want to know where interest rates are at, so that's the point of the graph.
So, Tom, if the Fed reacts to inflation by increasing interest rates, the cost of any building goes up as well?
That's correct.
Yep. So if inflation continues to escalate, the Feds want to kind of control the inflation, so they're going to jack up interest rates, which will limit borrowing and limit certain developments.
Right.
And try to hold that in check.
That's correct, yeah. Rising, they'll raise interest rates. Historically, they raise interest rates to try and control the cheap money that's out there, to lower the amount of inflation, you know, how much spending's going on.
You know, Tom, if you look at the stair steps, I call them, are they, the Feds did that on an incremental basis, then?
The red line.
Yeah, the red line, way on the right-hand side of the graph, you know, you got the stair step. So is that the way Feds work, by a quarter point, half point, or whatever it is they go up?
Typically, yeah. And then how fast they increase is really what goes on in those discussions behind closed doors and why everyone keys on the minutes from the Fed meetings and what they're discussing.
So what have they done from your perspective? Do you see them reacting because inflation is here? It is something to be concerned about. So do you see them doing what? I'm not asking you to be a crystal ball, but I mean, from your perspective, are we looking at what?
Again, I think, you know, if you read Bloomberg and Wall Street Journal, I think, you know, right now, they're looking at three-quarter point raises is what they're looking at. How does that impact the long end? I know just since the beginning of the year, usually January's a good time of the year to be in the market, and we've seen, we've already seen a 12-basis-point run-up in the 10-year treasury. And today, it's up again, you know, three, four basis points, you know. It was up 11-something yesterday, like I said, so that was officially the first trading day of the year. Is that an indication of how the rest of the year is going to go? I don't know. But as you can see from the green line, which is really the bond buyer, the muni rate, that you would be pricing against in any kind of bond issue, you can see that historically, rates have been above the 2%, you know, around, above 3% actually. So right now, we're still at about 100 basis points below where you might, what someone might consider average. So I mean, the market's still very good. I'm just trying to report that the interest rates are probably going to go up. They've already gone up, the 10-year treasury. Why do I talk about the 10-year treasury? Because the 10-year treasury is also where, you know, your mortgages are figured from, your interest rate on your mortgage rates are figured from the 10-year rate, treasury rate. So it's just, it's an important factor when you're looking at everything. And as you can see, the 10-year treasury, you know, followed along closely up until these last few years with how the munis also moved, so.
So what I'm hearing, Tom, is generally speaking, the Fed will raise interest rates if they want to get a handle on inflation, right?
That's typically what they'll do.
And that's usually to the detriment of people who want to borrow money, right?
Right.
And then, of course, if there is inflation in the economy, that also affects people who don't want to borrow money as well, right?
That's correct.
Like, for example, you and me, inflation affects us because it's essentially a backdoor tax on us as well.
Right.
So regular, everyday voters may be experiencing the pinch as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you've got, I meant to say this already, but so if you've got inflation, normally you have construction inflation, and you might have some folks in here that know more about construction inflation, but usually it runs 4.5% to 5% a year. That's just for a project, whether you're building a new school, new courthouse, new jail, new city hall. It's higher than that right now. You know, and I don't, I've heard 12%. Somebody, we were looking at a school that was $7.5 million, and they got architectural estimates back with their final design. It was up closer to $10 million. So that was, that's even more than 10%. So we've seen the inflation kick in. The nice thing was, interest rates stayed low. Now we've got inflation, and now interest rates might start going up to control inflation, but that isn't going to bring prices back down typically. Typically, once you reach a certain price point, even if you hold inflation, that's where your price point is. It doesn't change. So if that $10 million school, I know there was a discussion earlier this year, I've never seen that before. I'm not old enough, maybe, to have seen it, but people were talking like, well, this inflation's transitory. Well, I guess I've never seen where inflation, especially for building projects, hit a certain point and then back off. Usually they hit that point, and they may stay at that point as inflation gets under control, but it doesn't go back down 30%. It could, but I guess I've never seen that before.
Tom, I was just going to ask you the same question. Maybe you addressed it. But I've heard certain government officials at the federal government level talk about transitory inflation. Did the Fed chair kind of put that fire out and say that the inflation is more than just transitory?
Right, yeah. I mean, that's true. I think he's said that. But I mean, they haven't taken any action yet, but I think they have come to the conclusion, at least at the Fed, that it's not transitory.
Question I have, Madam Chair, is a timeline from an entity, taxpayers like this, if they were to decide to do some project, from the point when do they make the decision to actually get the bonds sold, so we know what the true interest rate would be? Is it days, weeks, months?
Well, it's, well, I mean, it's months. I mean, if we're starting from the very beginning, if you're going to do an election, and you're not going to do it at a primary or a general election, it's, you know, the rule of thumb is about 35 days to throw something, to put something together. That's under the new rules. It used to be 45 days. You can probably get it done sooner than that. But 35 days to have an election, so then you have that time period. And then you have probably 60 days after that to put all the documentation together to be able to lock in. And then you have probably 60 days after that to put all the documentation together to be able to, to lock interest rates to offer bonds to the market.
Things can happen in that time, up or down.
Right, so that's, that's your, that's kind of your time period. So, 90 days to 120 days is your time period.
That's for getting the bonds sold?
Well, locking the interest rates, and then probably another, you know, we'd do another three weeks, two weeks for closing. So, I just, I'd say 90 to, you know, 100 days to 120 days.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Gulov, if you're here, can I ask you a couple of questions? Can you come up to the mic?
Thank you.
You're not off the hot seat yet, but what, the construction inflation rates right now, we're at what? You presented that last week.
The, we've been measuring this for the last two years pretty carefully. Right now, we are seeing construction inflation rates are running 12% a year on, on the kind of projects that we're talking here, justice, county government kind of, kind of projects. And, and currently, the, the contractors that we, that we work with in probably 10 states are all saying it's a 1% a month kind of, kind of number.
Sure. I know we've had, at the presentation last week, that was given by Mr. Walsh. The, it looks like this inflation, construction inflation and project costs were going up at a rate of about $60,000 a week, $260,000 a month. Was that accurate analysis of those numbers?
Based on the kind of project you're talking about and the size of it.
How would you foresee a drop in, or an increase in interest rates affecting those inflation costs, if you're even qualified to speak to that? I don't know.
You know, I've been doing this for, since, I was a registered architect in 1974, so I've been doing this a long time. And I remember back in those days, a building would cost $20 a square foot. I've never seen a retrograde situation where construction costs go down. They may, you know, topically in certain, in certain geographies, they may go down a little bit, but in, in some cases, that's a seasonal, seasonal thing. We just, the, the market's full. If you go try to hire labor today in any industry, the market's full. And, and one of the things that is happening in the construction industry is that even, even the, the incidental pricing of various kinds of products, plywood, steel, concrete, they're all going up, and, and they're just not, they're not leveling out. I don't see, we have one project that we, we signed a contract on a year ago, and they decided to hire us to put, to do the drawings. It's a jail, 200-bed county jail. Decided to hire us and put the drawings on the shelf, and we'll wait for the prices to go down. They haven't gone down. When we put the drawings on the shelf, the project was $25 million. Today, that same project's $29 million. And, you know, the drawings are done. They're waiting on the shelf, but, but it's just not happening. I don't, I do not believe, based on any of the historical trends that I, that I know of, that construction costs will go down. I just don't see it. Will it go up? Will they continue to go up at a percent a month? I hope not. But there's nothing right now that I see that would indicate that they're not gonna be that way for a while, next year or so.
Mr. Gulov, the $60,000 a week number, is that based upon the cost for both a courthouse and a jail, or just a courthouse?
I'm not quite sure where the 60,000 a week come, it, it, we.
The project costs, and Mr. Walsh is here, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that project cost for what we were looking at needing to build the facility that your company designed and presented last week, was projected that, that cost was going up at a rate of $260,000 a month.
Yes.
And so, simple math was $60,000 a week.
You know, is, do they go up? Does it go up in those kind of increments? No. I mean, it, it, it's like any other average that you do in looking at, at values of things, you know. Is a car, does, if you go to buy a car today, is it gonna go up exactly a certain incremental amount in the next week? Probably not. But on an average, projects are gonna go up at that kind of level.
So, was that statistic then for both a courthouse and a jail?
No, that was just a courthouse.
Just a courthouse, okay.
Just a courthouse.
Any other commissioners have some questions for Mr. Gulov on what's been presented so far? If not, I'll have Mr. Grimmon come back up and finish.
Well, that's really just kind of where interest rates are at, is, is what I had. If you want to, you know, talk specific dollar amounts, we could, we could do that, too.
Well, what we're trying to find is what is the most economically feasible option for the county moving forward to get the courtrooms and the courthouse built that we, it's already been determined that we need.
Right, so, I mean, you have two options. Again, I'll, I'll recover this again for the public and for you folks. So, you have two options. You can do, you can do general obligation bonds. I talked about the vote a, a second ago. That's, that required by statute. I, I think I heard a 60%, but in, in county law, under the county section, it's a, it's a simple majority, 50, 50% plus one for a GO vote. General obligation, that's what GO stands for, general obligation. And then, and then there's also, you can do a lease purchase on new jails, and the law provides for that under Chapter 7. And then, you know, basically, that's, you pass that with, with 60%, you need four votes of the five. I think we figured that out, four, four votes of the five, because it says in the law, if you're gonna raise taxes, it's gotta be more than 60%, and three of five is only 60%. So, right, I do my math right there. But anyway, you need four votes at least from the commission to move forward. That's referable, to be able to do that. So, once it's, once it's passed, the 20-days runs on that, or actually, once it's published, the 20-days runs on that. 5% of the electorate from the last general election can force a vote. So, those are the two options you have. I know there's been some discussion about doing, doing some, you know, operating type of lease out there, and that's possible, too. I've never seen that done before, but, but I believe that is possible. You have to do it, fund it through your general fund, but it could be done, too.
Do you have some numbers for us today?
As far as, what numbers would you like to see? I mean, I presented some numbers a while ago. I don't know what's, what size we're looking at here.
What was the overall projected on the courtroom side? Was it 34? With this? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry. Yeah, 26 was the cost of the building, and then the soft cost, land and hiring, architect fees, all the other fees was 34.
And that was without the sheriff's office being there and without any jail beds? Correct? Okay.
Someone did it remotely for me this time. All right, so there was some discussion also about how Harrisburg, you know, basically says that they're not gonna raise, raise taxes. So, I took that to apply to Lingan County also, and took a look at that. And, and how Harrisburg does it is they look at a levy that they've had in place to build whatever school, XYZ school, and then as valuation grows, then they continue to levy the same amount of money. So, backing into a similar situation, if the county, when the county did the original courthouse addition, you know, where we're standing, back in 2006, we had total valuation. So, that's the column that says slash total EAV was $2.6 billion. And the big takeaway here is that the tax rate at that time was .25 cents, or it was 25 cents per thousand, 25 cents per thousand, or .25 dollars per thousand, 25 cents per thousand. So, utilizing that, again, if we'd left that right now, that, that levy is decreased to, and I don't have a, don't have a sheet for that. But basically, that levy now, based on the valuation where you're at right now, $7.5 billion, you've grown from 2.6 to $7.5 billion. That equates to about 8 cents, little 8 cents per thousand. So, your 25 cents has gone down to 8 cents.
It's gone down to 8 cents or by 8 cents?
It's gone down to 8 cents. So, it's, so it's gone down 17, basically 17 cents.
And that's due to growth, Tom, correct?
Basic, yes. It's gone, it's, it's through the growth.
Your assessment.
Right, yep. Through the growth, you know, especially up by, obviously by 57th Street and the Sioux Falls growth and everything that's happened from 57th Street South that's in Lincoln County. So.
So, Tom, just a minute. Our tax rate in 2007 was .2647 something, and our tax rate now is projected at 22 is 2.5130, correct? So, actually, it's gone down?
Right, you're, you're, and, and I'll defer to Sherry what the exact number is, but just simple math, if you look at, you know, it's 650, $665,000 and divide that by 7.5 billion, multiply by 1,000, you get your, you get, you get what it is. And that's about 8 cents, a little over 8 cents. So, I ran some numbers based on that. The difference there for that 8 cents, 8.5 cents, if... Let's see. Well, I didn't really know what the numbers, what the total was for your, for your project. So, what we did was, we kept it at, I kept it at 25 cents. They also in Harrisburg grow, grow the valuation. So, what I've done is applying that same model. I've taken your valuation, actually started with, instead of, it's 7.5 billion, but when I ran the numbers, and I didn't want to put a bunch of different numbers out there, I started at $7.4 billion. You can see that in the, in this column right here. Again, same total EAV, 7.44. That was what, that was the number I started with. And then I grew it, just like Harrisburg does. I grew it out at 4% and then 2% after that for a couple of years. Anyway, what I did was, I tried to back into a number that, that brought us back up to the 25 cents per thousand, which was what the original levy was for, for the courthouse addition. And by doing that, you can see on this, on this sheet here, that would produce about $46.5 million on 25 years if we went out 25 years. So, applying that same, that same model, okay? I'm just, just trying to apply the same model and how, and how someone could say, all right, well, if we left it at 25 cents and we were still levying at 25 cents, we'd be able to generate over 25 years about $46 million, and...
Tom, did you produce one of these for 37 million? Is that what I thought I saw up there?
Yep, I did, I did, I did produce one for 37. Because we had an idea that you, you guys thought maybe you had some Fed money for about 10 million. So, this one then reduced it from the 20, from the 25 cents down to about 17.7 cents. So, we're still not at the full 25 cents per thousand that we were in 2006. We're at 17, 17.7, 17.7 cents. And you can see on the bottom line there, I try and outline what it is. So, this is $37 million provided, if you have your $10 million in federal money available, you'd have $47 million.
So, if the project cost around 36 million, if you would go with the course of action proposed by Lincoln County Development, of course, and there are other options other than them, of course. But if you went with that option, and you use this $37 million here, you, the way that you figure this out is you've gotta have 17.7 cents, correct?
That's correct, and that's...
And people are currently taxed at 8 cents per 1,000, correct?
Correct.
And so, that would be a tax increase of, well, just do the math, 17.7 minus 8, correct?
Right.
So, their property taxes would rise by, you know, 9.7 cents? Am I doing my math correct there?
That's...
So, property taxes would go back up to 17.7 cents per 1,000 in order to pay for $37 million?
That's correct.
Okay.
You've got, you've got the numbers right.
Okay.
When do the other bonds, when are those, when are they done? Will those drop off?
They're done in 2026, correct?
Right. So, the, the existing bonds are, that column there is the, is the annex bonds, the original 25 cents. And you can see the existing bonds now, because of some refinancing, were down below 665,000. But I'm just using that as the baseline. That's, actually, I was using 650 to figure my numbers, again, because it's nice, round, even numbers. And, but we're actually below that now, because we've refinanced, we're down to around $620,000. We're actually 40,000 below, 45,000 below where we were at originally. So, we've actually reduced it through refinancing by another 45,000, not just through increased valuation. So, we wouldn't even go all the way to the 25 cents under the scenario you're talking about, Commissioner. Is that it would only take, like you said, another 9, 9.5 cents is what I have in my head from when I ran the numbers, but 9.7, 9.5, additional levy to be able to do this.
Right, there would be a period of taxation years 23, 4, 5, and 6, where there would be a period of increased taxation. And then in year 27, it would drop back down to 17.7, correct?
Actually, no, the way I did this, I wrapped it around and used some, as we talked, discussed the other day, some capitalized interest to round it out. So, really, your increase, your increase is the 9.5 cents, 9.7 cents. And that is your increase throughout this, this whole scenario. When the, the old bonds come off, the old courthouse bonds come off, then the debt service on the new bonds then increased to the 17 cents. Right now, it wouldn't be a total 17 cents, because we're adding in, if you look at the existing bonds column, we're actually adding that in to get to the 17. So, once that gets paid off, then your debt service actually increases. You can see that it's about 1.3 million through 26, and then it jumps up to 1.6, because it takes into account that, that debt service that's coming off. So, your total increase, it, there's not an additional increase, I guess is what I'm getting at, an additional increase. If you pass it and it moves forward, and we can sell the bonds at the rates we're thinking we can sell them at, it's, it's 9.5 cents addition throughout the term.
So, 17.7 cents total for the next 30 years?
Correct.
Under this.
Correct.
Exhibits proposal, Exhibit G.
Yes.
And this is just for courtrooms only?
Well, this is, actually, this is for, for this dollar amount.
Just a dollar amount, whatever you can get for that amount of money.
Right, right. It, it wasn't presented to me exactly what we were talking about, jail, courtrooms, accommodation. It, it was just a dollar amount we discussed.
Okay.
But again, that will change with growth, that percentage or mill levy, because that's not factored in, that's a constant at that date, so.
Right, right. We're not...
Anything that we fund will get spread out as the county continues to grow as well?
That, that's correct. That's correct. That's correct, that's correct. But as I mentioned before, using the model like they use in Harrisburg, they project a growth, there is a growth projected on here of...
Yeah, so, Tom, I think what you should explain to people is how the projected growth model works. This is not like a, taking out a home mortgage, where I pay thirteen-hundred dollars a month for the next thirty years, regardless of what happens in the economy. I think what you should explain to people is how the expected growth is actually built into this plan, right? Because that's what we had discussed, is that there's, is this the four percent or is this the six percent growth model?
Right, so there's, there's, again, not to have too many numbers out here, and if we got, we get down to brass tacks, nuts and bolts, whatever, we'd probably reduce that. But the initial model was, because again, like what Harrisburg, it's six percent, they do like six percent for the first few years. Sherri says that's, that's a step too far, and I looked at her numbers, and I think I agree with that. But again, I didn't want to change the numbers and bring a bunch of new numbers down here and present, so we probably have to back off of that a little bit. But yes, it's like six percent for the first few years, and then it drops off to four percent, and then it's, for two years, I believe, and then it's two percent after that. And that's similar to the model that, that Harrisburg School uses.
Right, so to Commissioner Poppins's point, there would have to be growth beyond six percent in the county in order for the seventeen-point-seven cents to drop down to something lower.
Right.
Historically, Lincoln County only sees four percent growth.
That's correct.
These numbers anticipate six percent growth.
For the first, I still want, for the first three years?
Correct, for the first three years. So we would have to see increased growth above and beyond the historical norm in order for the seventeen-point-seven cents. So basically, if people think, a taxpayer says, okay, I'm going to pay an extra twenty-five dollars per year on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house under this plan, they're not going to see any tax relief on that seventeen-point-seven cents unless Lincoln County growth outperforms its historical standard by two percent or more, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And like I, but like I said, I think we would go back and re, I mean, when we get down to it, we redo it, and we just do the four percent, and it's not going to change the numbers that much, Joel, I don't think.
Right.
I mean, it's still going to be around the seventeen-seven or seven, you know, eighteen, I mean, we're talking three-tenths of one percent. I know that's a big number for people that have a lot of farmland, but, but I don't think it'll change that, that much, because we can take out the four percent even longer if we wanted to. Again, I thought this is a very conservative model, except for those first couple of years, because the latter part is only two percent, and that's, that's typically inflation. So that's, you know, we're not, there's no big stretch there when we do the two percent. But that was the model, you know, that's kind of the model they use, and, and then they keep their levy, like I think, believe their levy's at twelve dollars per thousand, and they try and keep it at twelve dollars per thousand for all their GO issues that are outstanding.
So, Tom, is it safe to say you've got a tug-of-war going on here? You want to maintain the tax rate of seventeen or twenty-five or whatever? And on the other hand, you have inflation, on the other hand, you have bonds that are selling histor, are at a fairly low level, and yet, we know that the increases are there, they're real. So we got a real balancing act. How do you maintain one on the other? How do you meet the needs of the growing county? I mean, this is a growing county, I mean, if we're talking about growth of four or five or six percent, also, our law enforcement, our felony rates continue to increase, all of that continues to increase. There isn't such a thing as stopping the whole thing and saying, wait, and as we were told, put it on the shelf and we'll get back to it. So we really have a very situation that the public has to understand, and I hope that, and I'm sure they will. And I think the public has to be the ones that are going to have to be the leaders on this thing to try and understand and make this known to the constituents.
Right.
You know, I mean, if commissioners do that all the time, you, you know, they always got an issue whether you're being political or not. I look, that, I look at the public and saying, I look for them to be the leaders on this thing, to understand this stuff, and to explain to the public, and whatever happens, happens. But we are in this catch-twenty-two, tax rates versus growing inflation versus cost.
So you hit on, you hit on some, I agree, and I, you hit on some important points. I was, and maybe I'll go off topic a little bit here, but, but I was on the, I used to live in T, I was in the city council on T, when we built the pool in T. And we knew T was going to grow, but we didn't think we could get a bond issue passed, because I was living in T when it was eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine people or whatever, I think they're over six thousand right now. And we built the pool, and I feel bad for them, because we capitulated, we gave in, we kind of went with the size of pool that the community could support at that time, and, and we thought we could get a GO bond issue passed for, and we did, it was like seventy-seven percent, could have built a bigger pool with that kind of approval. But, but anyway, long story short, if anyone's been by there, it's full, it's completely full in the summer, and I feel bad that we didn't build a bigger pool, but we didn't think we could get that passed, because building for the future is really hard to do, even though you know, you can like see it's going to happen. And, you know, it is what it is, and that's my one example, there's others that, that are out there. I mean, we work as, we've worked with Minnetonka County on their jail, we did a big jail, they thought it was going to be way too much money, they were actually building for a little bit of the future back in two thousand, two thousand and one, and then that was supposed to be, I forget, at least twenty years, if not more, longer period, and here we were back in two thousand seventeen, adding on to their jail, another forty-six million dollars. So it didn't even make it to its projected life expectancy before they had that add-on again. So it's tough to build for what you think the future's going to look like, I get it. But, you know, again, I don't, I don't see it stopping either, you can bring in about a dozen economic development guys, they'll probably tell you, you know, it's not going to stop, you know, when the, when your interchange out there opens up on eighty, Eightieth Street, what that's going to do, I mean, it's just, I just, you know, there's people in this room, they're older than I am, that may still be like, no, 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 but I'm like, I've been around thirty years doing this, and, you know, maybe, I don't know, I'm not going to jump into the jail size in the middle of that discussion, but again, I mean, if you're building a jail for the size of people you have now, that's, that's not the right way to go, I don't think. But anyway, that's just me speaking, I don't live in Lincoln County and pay taxes down here, I'm sorry, I live in Minnetonka County.
Tom, thanks for your comments. I do have another question, though, on the thirty-seven million dollar Exhibit G, just to point this out, if that were to go into effect at seventeen-point-seven cents per one thousand, that is approximately twenty-five dollars per year on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, correct? Or is my math mistaken?
Well, we were, I mean, we're thinking, yeah, I didn't do the math on that, but if twenty-five times, you know, times nine-and-a-half, well, if it, we just take it right to ten cents, you're right. So we take it right to ten cents, let's do easy math here, if we take it right to ten cents, a ten cents increase, it's, you know, and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's twenty-five dollars a year on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house.
Okay, so twenty-five dollar a year increase on two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, fifty bucks on a half million?
Yep.
Okay. Easy math, that's rounded off, of course, right? But that's, it's like horseshoes and hand grenades, right?
Yeah.
Pretty close.
That's, that's real close.
Yeah.
But it's three percent, three-tenths of one percent on an increase of farmland, right? Is that what you said earlier?
No, I'm sorry. So what I was saying was, if we, we were rounding, I've got seventeen-seven in here, if we take out that six percent growth, we may, we will have a little bit of an increase there, it'd be less than, I, again, I'd like to run the numbers before I throw anything out, but I don't think it's going to be less, it's going to be less than three, three cents, or three-tenths of a cent. So it'd be like seventeen-point-nine instead of seventeen-point-seven cents to make up for that growth. I don't want to show growth where someone can come in and, and say, hey, this is not right, Tom. Yeah, it works for, it works for, it worked for, for Harrisburg, I think, because again, their area's different, and they're growing right into the population, the, the commercial development and stuff that's going on in Sioux Falls, that makes a lot of sense. Obviously, Lincoln County's way bigger, and they don't have the, the amount of growth that's going on, but they have substantial growth. Obviously, you can see from two thousand six to two thousand twenty, you've gone from two, you know, two billion up to seven-point-four billion, so, but it's not at the same rate. So we need to, I need to back off of that a little bit. But again, if you're looking for a number today, I mean, I really can't even give you that number today, Commissioner, because, you know, interest rates are, are trending up right now, and they're still at historically low rates, I mean, they're great rates. If inflation is going up at twelve percent and you can finance, even if rates go up, say, a full percentage point, we go up to three, three percent over twenty-five years or thirty years, I mean, you're still better off financing at that rate than you are waiting. Again, if you've come to the conclusion that this project's going to come sooner or later, and maybe some of you haven't come to that conclusion yet, but if interest rates continue to go up, they're still at a very good rate, but if inflation continues to go up, inflation is what's going to kill you on this project. I mean, it's, like I said, four, four-and-a-half to five percent normally, and you're at twelve, ten, I said ten to twelve percent, it was nice of the gentleman, Mr. Guloff, to come up and, and mention that it's about twelve percent, so I was on the low end, but I agree. So it's, it's good to get into it now, because of that inflation, it's just, it's going to make the project way more expensive over time.
Sherri, have you ran any numbers on these different options available to the county? And what makes the most sense financially? I mean, is a bond the most financially responsible thing to do, or...
Compared to?
Oh, compared to a lease purchase, compared to leasing or purchasing the land outright? Have you looked into that?
Until I have solid numbers, I can't give you the answer, but with the interest rate that the bonds have, they look more favorable.
Than anything that's been presented so far?
I don't think there's been anything presented solidly. The bonding is cheaper.
So when you say we don't have final numbers, I guess what numbers are you looking for? I mean, do we need to make decisions on other things so that we have final numbers?
Yep.
And what are those things that we need to make decisions on?
Those are your, I, I suppose the, the size, the cost, there's, all's I need to know is the number. I don't make the decisions on, you know, how big the courtrooms are going to be, or, and you guys have discussed the sizes, but I, I don't have any numbers.
Sure.
Even with Mr. Welsh's presentation, it was somewhere between twenty-six and thirty-seven, I mean...
Well, and then it was even sixty-four at one point with, with cells.
There's been all kinds of numbers thrown out there with no, nothing solid.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the courthouse advisory committee that can answer some of those questions on if, what the proposal as presented last week, without any sheriff's office and without any jail cells, is that what is being recommended that we move forward on? Or is there, are there changes that are being suggested? Good morning.
Good morning. Madam Chairman, I'm going to try to answer that question.
Can you state your name and address, Larry?
My name's Larry Nelson, I live at four-twenty-six East Second in Canton, South Dakota. I'm a lawyer here in Canton, I've been a country lawyer for my entire law career. I serve on a committee, and you've called it the courthouse committee, and I served with citizens, and there are Betty Otten, Chad Skiles, Dave Van Newheisen, who's an architect, and Paul Paulson. And all of us have come to the conclusion through this process that you've gone through that there is a crying need to do something about the courtrooms, you got to do it. A collateral of this discussion is, is that there's a crying need, that you have to do something about your jails, and you have, you have to do it. We have not come to a consensus of, of what you need, and I want to tell you why, and that's because we don't think you've been through the process that you need to do. One of the things on your agenda item today is consideration of hiring a project manager, and we did sit down and visit with the Tegra Group and Dick Strasberg, who is a project manager. And this is not a new concept for you folks, because you would have used this back in two thousand six with the Winkles Group when you built this very building here. And so the first thing I thought about was, well, where's the Winkles Group, and they're not in business anymore, those guys have been able to retire, but they've been replaced by the, the Tegra Group. And I want to tell you some of the projects Tegra has been involved in, you know, they did the Sioux Falls, Denny Sanford Premier Center, the City of Sioux Falls Administration Building, the Minnehaha County Jail Expansion, they're working right now on the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center, they did the City of Rapid City Monument Arena, that's to rebuild the equivalent of the Sanford Center we have in Sioux Falls, and then on the private side, the Black Hills Energy Corporate Headquarters. In visiting with them, they told us their job is to sit down with all you folks in the government and help you figure out what it is that you actually need, and ask the tough questions, and have you guys all come do a consensus. They're also supposed to help build a consensus among, excuse me, all of us here, the citizens, the folks that are going to pay for it, and once you get that consensus to keep everybody on the page and to get the project done in the most expeditious manner and the most financially fiscal manner. And as part of that process, we discussed, is this thing something that should, should we do a lease, or should we be doing it? And that's your financing question through bonds. And he said, well, that's part of our job, is to sit down and discuss with you and show you the numbers, so you can make a decision on what makes the most sense. As it relates to, you know, a jail, we believe that a regional jail is something that, that you should consider, and you should still explore that, and we have a, an interest in South Dakota contractors doing this work, and South Dakota people doing this project. I don't know if that answers your project or not, what I want to impress on you is that we believe it is important that, that you get a project manager to represent you.
And you think we need to do that before deciding on the bond issue? Is that the consensus of the committee?
I think your project manager is going to sit down and show you, this is what it's going to cost you if you lease, this is what it's going to cost you if you bond. And, and I think you need to have that explored by somebody that doesn't have any skin in the game, is the short version. He represents you, he's not, he's not selling a lease project, and he's not selling a bond project.
You know, and I know we had had some discussion, and I'll open it up for discussion amongst the commission on that issue, is this project manager, is that something that we would want to do an RFP for, or do we want to hire professional services for that? If it's something we're going to do.
You're asking for an opinion, Madam Chair?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's sixty thousand dollars a week this is costing us on average, just sitting here twiddling our thumbs, let's get off the pot and move.
I agree with Mr. Nelson on the qualifications of the individual that we're talking about here. I mean, how do you find somebody that's had multimillion-dollar projects from the Sanford Center to jails to working with government? I mean, I don't know that, when you have somebody staring you in the face that's fully qualified, I would say, get ahold of them, talk to them, and engage them.
Does our auditor have that information? Do you know? Do you have the information about this particular project manager?
We have that by next time.
I was going to say, would there be a chance, I'm not going to be here on the eleventh, and I'm, and I don't need to be here, I can, I can listen in if I need to, to have that person, if they're available, come in on the eleventh and give us a pitch?
Did you have any other questions?
Can you just get that information to our auditor, so she can make contact with that person?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna kinda open it up right now, 'cause this was a work session, and I wanted to give, since we have, um, experts here that have traveled here and, uh, taken time out, I don't know, um, Mr. Welsh, did you wanna say anything today? Well, I'm just, I'm gonna open it up if anybody wants to make comments or ask questions, but I just wanna keep it orderly, and if you're gonna speak, you need a microphone. Okay.
So, just a, a little bit about, uh, so I'm just gonna speak off the cuff here. I got involved in this project. Obviously, when I got involved, uh, I was of the understanding the decision had already been made that, that Lincoln County needed a courthouse. I really was never, I knew, I knew it started, or there was talk about a jail project and those kinda things, um, much to the, the, the guy who spoke first. I, I really was not involved in anything at whatever point that stuff went on. I look at it, and I'll just kinda speak, obviously, I'm biased if, if we end up doing a, building this and leasing it, or whatever, but I've, I've made it very clear from the beginning that the only thing I'm looking to do is provide an option for the county, so there's no feelings hurt here if the county goes a different way. Uh, we've discussed it ourselves, um, as far as what the best thing to do is for, for us as well. Um, when I look at numbers, I, I think every, I think for the most part, the information that's been presented today is pretty accurate, whether you talk about the cost and increase in 1% a month that things go up, um, if the county can afford it, if you can't. I told you last week, uh, I put in my presentation that suggested the county get a project manager. I put in my presentation the costs, and as a, as a resident of Lincoln County, my, my feeling on it is this, I know that, uh, Commissioner Aaron's was talking about, well, taxes going up and everyone dealing with inflation. There's always different ways to look at things. I don't, I don't dispute that as a taxpayer myself, but on the other hand, I look at how fast it's going up, and in my mind, I'm under the impression that this is something that has to be done. So my point was, if it has to be done, and it's costing money to wait, then, then why are we waiting? Um, that's the thing, whether it moves with, with me or not, I think people tend to, the more I get involved with this, that I have some vested interest, and I, I guess I'm, I'm biased, but it, it's not the biggest deal in the world to me to do this project. When, when we approached the county, it was literally, I believe, it said, if, if we have an option that the county likes, we're willing to work with the county. Um, that's where I stood on this. Um, I, I want this to be a good thing for Lincoln County. We want Lincoln County to benefit from this. If I felt otherwise, I, I, I wouldn't want any part of it. Um, that's, I feel pretty strongly about that. So I also view it as this, I, I, I'm a, a very conservative guy, but in my opinion, I vote for county commissioner, right? I vote for a county commissioner, and I expect that county commissioner to be informed and then make the best decisions. I, I don't wanna follow every political issue in the county, though after coming to county, some of these meetings, it is kinda interesting, I could see getting more involved, but it's, it's not really my role. I, I expect that the county commissioners are the ones that have the most information, are well up to speed on the events of the county, and, and make the right decisions. That's, that's where I'm at. I don't, I'm not saying a public vote is the wrong way to go, I'm just saying, I, I personally don't wanna wait if, if, with the price of, uh, the interest and things like that, but obviously, the public opinion matters. I'm just saying, I put my trust in the county commissioners, that's why we elect them. So I'm good with what, you know, speaking for me personally, what, what you guys decide. And I'm happy to, to help, I'm happy to not help if that's the decision, and, and that's just a 100% of, of the facts of where we stand. If, um, you know what we offer, and if there's a way to work that into the best plan for the county, we're willing to step up and help. I never want to be looked at as viewed in a negative light, and I don't want the county, county commissioners looked at in a negative light 'cause of anything we've done. I, I want to be a positive option or solution for the county, or step aside. That's, that's pretty much all, uh, I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and address the board? Anybody that has any questions for any of the presenters here today? All right. Commissioners, anybody? All right. If not, um, we're gonna get the building project manager on our agenda either on the 11th or the, the next meeting. All right, we'll move on to the next, um, board action on the annual board appointments. Sean?
Hello. Uh, on your briefing packet form for this item, the public information packet on the table, uh, there about the door, as well as online, there's a list of the 2021 board appointments, um, and now is the time to take any action to either keep it the same or make any changes.
Board members?
Madam Chair, is there any, is there any board member that wants to change their responsibilities?
Commissioner Aaron's, do you wanna change any of yours?
No, I'm happy.
Commissioner Poppins?
I relinquish anything if anybody would like I serve in any capacity that I currently serve.
Commissioner Gibbon?
I'm fine.
Yeah, Commissioner Schmidt?
I'm fine.
All right. Well, then I'd consider a motion to, uh, keep all of those board appointments in place from the 2021 year.
So, so moved, Madam Chair, on the board assignments.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. And we need to appoint legal newspapers for Lincoln County.
Yes, ma'am.
Sean, can you run through what those legal newspapers are?
Yes, the legal newspapers as, um, appointed in 2021 were the Sioux Valley News, the Lenox Independent, the T Weekly, the Beersford Republic, and the Argus Leader.
Okay, consider a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I have a question. The Beersford Republic, did we, was that the newspaper that we had issues with, for clarification? I would, I would like us to, because of the conflict, uh, it costs the taxpayers money because of their inability, unfortunately, to, uh, meet our requirements for notification. Um, I would like us to at least discuss or, uh, remove that paper as a legal newspaper.
Sherry, on the, on the Beersford Republic, did they charge us when there was a mess up and they didn't get it published in time? Or did it, what did it cost us more, if anything?
They didn't charge us, but the other papers did, and then we had to re-advertising all of them again.
And what discussions, if any, have you had with them about, um, correcting the problem so it doesn't happen anymore?
We've had discussions, um, a few of them.
When was the last time that there was an issue with it?
Do you want me to speak to this?
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So the first time that this occurred, um, they asked us to, uh, specify the exact date for publication, so we did that. Um, the next time that we reached out to them asking for, um, something different was pretty recently, and they asked to add an additional email. Um, one of the troubles was getting in contact with the individuals themselves, so if there was an issue, um, I wouldn't be able to reach out to them sometimes for days. And, uh, as of now, we haven't had an opportunity to test that new, um, method, but we have done everything we can so far to, uh, help accommodate.
Commissioner Poppins, um, we've experienced that, but on the other hand, uh, there are lots of individuals that live in the southern part of our county, right next to Beersford, that probably utilize that particular paper. And, um, I don't, certainly don't wanna deny them access to our things. Can we put them on probation for a year if we had to, or?
I, I think we're not prohibited by advertising in the paper, but we just classify them as a legal newspaper, not only to cost the taxpayers to re-advertise, also infringe it's on individuals' rights to expedite, uh, their process, and we had a repetitive issue with them. I think that would be the probationary measure, uh, remove them as a legal newspaper, continue to aver, or, uh, publish in their paper and see how they do. If they, um, can meet our requirements moving forward as the timelines, that would be a good indication for the following year to place them back as a legal newspaper.
So Sherry, they would get all of our advertising, knowing elections, uh, if we're selling property, if we're putting something up?
That's what I would do, is I would advertise with them, but not put them as illegal so that they're not required to advertise. So if there is a mispublication, there's no problem.
That would be my motion.
So they're not denied anything?
Nope, we would still spend the money with them. It just wouldn't be legal.
Okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
Could you just clarify the motion, please?
A motion is to, is to still advertise with the, uh, Beersford paper, but, uh, not classify them as a legal newspaper, um, and then keeping the Sioux Valley News, the Lenox Independent, the T Weekly, and the Argus Leader as our official, uh, legal newspapers for the year 2022. I, with the hope, and it doesn't have to be part of the motion, but the hope is that they prove that the hiccups that they had in 2021 are resolved for 2022 and can become a legal newspaper again after that.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Did, uh, our auditors say they still would be compensated for the information that's put in the paper, because I think that is a concern?
I can add that as my motion.
Yeah, I would support it if that is added.
Yeah, okay.
Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We need to appoint official depositories?
Yes, and I did vet this list with Treasurer Block, um, and there are no changes for this year. So may I please read the requested resolution?
Please do.
Okay, to appoint official depositories of the county as follows: Farmer State Bank at Canton, Security Savings Bank at Canton, First Bank and Trust at Canton, Relia Bank at T, First National Bank at Harrisburg, Premier Bank at Hudson, Frontier Bank at Sioux Falls, South Dakota Public Funds Investment Trust at Sioux Falls, First National Bank at Sioux Falls, First Bank and Trust Wealth Management Services for TIF number seven, US Bank 2013 leased account and 2016 leased account.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to appoint those official depositories?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item five on our agenda, appointment of the chattel mortgage sale location.
In the past, this has been in front of the courthouse. I can't find an instance where that hasn't been the case.
I would move that it remain the front of the courthouse.
Second.
Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. And we need to appoint a board of mental illness?
Yes, and the individuals there, in fax and vetting, came from, um, the state's attorney's office, as well as the board members, um, and I believe that these individuals were also appointed by Minnehaha County.
So question I had about this was, um, where did these names come from, and how does this process work of how these people are appointed to this?
These came from the chairman of the Mental Health Board, uh, had forwarded an email to us saying that they needed to reappoint. The statutes allow for individuals that serve for three years, and three consecutive three-year terms is the statutory limit. All of them are, have been previously appointed, and so this is a reappointment. Um, I believe some of them are coming up to the end of their term, uh, but usually, these come through various different, um, areas, which is, sometimes they're recruited by the chairman. I know, I believe commissioners may have at times helped out recruit with them, or recruit for them. Um, but I believe all of these, at this point in time, have been previous members of the board and just being reappointed.
So, and I don't have a problem with that today, but when their term expires, um, do we advertise the position being open or not?
I don't know that we have, I haven't been around for the process where we had just an open position, um, so I can't answer the question for you.
Okay.
I guess when that process comes open, it's always one of those things the commission can direct how you'd like to handle it.
So these people are just being reappointed? There's no new appointees on here?
I don't believe there's any new appointees for Lincoln County.
Okay.
I would move that, uh, those listed be appointed.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item seven on our agenda, authorize county officials to attend educational conferences per SDCL 7725.
Yes, this is an annual resolution that we do, um, per the cited statute there. Um, the, the resolution reads, "Be it resolved that SDCL 7725 states that the Board of County Commissioners, by resolution, may authorize county officials to attend educational conferences, meetings, and conventions held and conducted within a 500-mile radius of the Lincoln County courthouse, 104 North Main, Canton, South Dakota, for up to three days pertaining to the betterment and advancement of county government. Therefore, be it resolved that the county highway superintendent, auditor, treasurer, register of deeds, state's attorney, sheriff, county assessing officer, planning and zoning director, IT director, 911 coordinator, building superintendent, human resources director, GIS director, 4-H advisor, and their respective staff be authorized to attend conferences, meetings, and conventions for the purpose set forth in SDCL 7725, and that the mileage and necessary expenses to attend such be allowed. This resolution shall be for the fiscal year 2022."
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Thank you. Do your second.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We need board action to set the fee for precinct election officials.
Correct. So, this resolution goes as follows. Whereas SDCL 121511 made it the responsibility of the county commissioners of each county to set fee for precinct election officials of all units of government in the county. Therefore, be it resolved that the fee for precinct election officials at Lincoln County be set at $175 at election superintendent at $200 for each election. Be it further resolved that pursuant to SDCL 12157, such election officials be allowed a fixed fee for attendance at meeting called by the county auditor for instruction on election laws and the duties of the judges and clerks of election as follows: $25 compensation for election officials, plus 42 cents per mile or the established county rate round trip. Be it further resolved that there will be one cell phone provided by one precinct worker per polling place, and a $20 fee will be issued for the usage of that phone for only that day. Be it further resolved that the person delivering the poll books in the ballot boxes to the county auditor's office at the county seat shall receive the county rate for mileage as established pursuant to SDCL 7724 for miles necessarily traveled in going to and returning from making the delivery. This is SDCL 121511. The county rate for mileage is 42 cents per mile. Be it further resolved that the judges, clerks, resolution board, counting board, and any other personnel deemed necessary by the county auditor for receiving ballot boxes, supplies, and for tabulating ballots be allowed $15 per hour. Be it further resolved that the absentee precinct personnel deemed necessary by the county auditor for conducting absentee precincts be allowed $15 per hour plus 42 cents per mile or the established county rate round trip. Be it further resolved that the payment of rent for polling places be $50 per precinct, not to exceed $100 per polling place.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Awesome move.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Item nine, we need to appoint a designated to request resources from the South Dakota Department of Agriculture's Wildland Fire Division.
Yes, so this was requested of us to be done annually, um, by the state, um, just last year.
All right, and Harold Timmerman's our guy, all right?
Correct.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Name me Harold.
Thank you. I have a motion by Schmidt, a second by Aaron's to approve. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item 10 on our agenda.
So this, um, is a new, um, resolution, since now that we have a publication- So this is a new resolution, since now that we have a publication fee that was set for us by the board this past year, we figured we could pass a resolution annually allowing for the scheduling and publication of those public hearings that were set forth in that resolution to set the publication fee.
That would speed the process up?
Correct. This would be to speed up the process, it would move the process ahead by one entire meeting. So depending on where that meeting fell, it could be one week or two weeks.
All right. Heard the requests.
And may I read it, please?
Sure, please do.
Just for the people listening. This would be to authorize the auditor to schedule and advertise all public hearings for alcoholic beverage licenses, vacate highway plat right-of-ways, road districts, airport hangar leases and medical marijuana licenses as needed in the year 2022.
I would so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to item 11. Need a motion to approve and authorize the chair and sheriff to execute the 2022 Union County Jail contract with Lincoln County.
That's as simple as it is, it's, their premium did not change, it's $65 a day. Honestly, we didn't use them much in 2021, and I don't anticipate using them much in 2022, but it is a good, a good option to have if we were to, to need them.
Sure. Now, I've heard the requests, is there a motion?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to item 12, Approve and authorize the chair and state's attorney's office to execute the 2022 Sioux Falls Humane Society contract.
Same thing, just an annual contract that we use, Humane Society to, to take care of our animal calls.
Awesome move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we need to authorize a surplus and trade of a 40-caliber Glock, 24 of them to be exact.
Yes, we'd like to, to upgrade our firearms that were purchased in 2013. I've worked with Jack's Uniform out of Sioux City, they're willing to trade us our current guns, which are anywhere from 13 years old to, or, I'm sorry, nine years old to up to three years old, but they're two generations, they're willing to give us $300 per gun. They're also willing to let the deputies purchase those gun at no additional charge. So if a deputy wants a sentimental, the gun that they've been carrying, they can purchase it at that price of $300 to trade to a, from a 40-caliber to a nine-millimeter, and I have a list of our, our firearms guys put together that ammo is more readily available, it's cheaper, there's more accuracy with the nine-millimeter than 40-caliber, it's easier for our female officers to handle or officers with smaller hands. So it's just a good switch, and it's, it's kind of the switch that's, it's happening across the country from the 40-caliber to the nine-millimeter.
So each, so each deputy purchases their own gun?
They, no, the county would purchase the gun that they carry, but they would be, they would be able to purchase the gun that they're carrying from the vendor if they wanna keep that gun.
If they wanna keep.
But the gun that they carry on their side would be a county-issued gun. And lastly, our warrant fee of $25, the sheriff fee that we charge on, on bench warrants, has roughly $10,000 in that account, so we would purchase the new guns with that money, so it would not be a general but, fund expenditure, which is gonna be roughly $5,500 after trade.
All right, thank you. We've heard the requests, our motions.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to item 14. We need to authorize chair to sign right-of-way and utility certificates for the big grant application for Structure 42-148-050.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Yes, it is. It's for the big grant that we signed off on last week.
All right. Is there a motion?[1679.13]